Can you guys hear me?
I can hear you.
Okay, it's a new computer, so I wasn't sure. Thanks.
Evan, can you hear me?
Yes.
Great. How do, uh, how do we look on attendance, Evan?
I think Fred just joined us, um, and he is the last member we're waiting on. We have no Massimo, uh, and no Joe Vayuso. Anyone else seeing like a colorful background?
Uh, yeah.
Was it blue?
Yeah.
Yeah, I was playing with setting meeting wallpaper. Like I said, it's, I had to reset up Zoom.
Why do we let Marcy play with technology? I mean, come on.
Like that? There you go. Oh, pink.
That's nice.
We, we can, we can change the transparency or like a desert sunset. How about that one?
I'm surprised you can change it for all of us, but I guess you're co-host, right?
I, I guess, yeah. I'll, I'll put it back. It just went, I was, now that I know you all see what I'm doing, I'll stop.
Um, I think we are ready to go, Chuck.
Okay, well then, let's call this meeting of the Bramford Planning and Zoning Commission to Order. It is Thursday, November twenty first, two thousand and twenty four, and I have about seven oh two P M. We'll start by introducing members of the commissioning staff. Commission member Joe Chadwick. Joe, are you here?
Joe Chadwick is present.
Thank you, Joe. Fred Russo. Fred, are you here?
Fred Russo, present.
Marcy Palusi. Marcy, are you here?
Marcy's here.
Sharon Hutner. Sharon, are you here?
Sharon Hutner is here.
Thanks. And I, I understand that Joe Vayuso and Massimo are not here. Is that correct, Evan?
Yes, that's correct.
Okay. Our staff this evening is our assistant planner, soon to be interim planner, Evan Bryning. Evan, you're here?
Here.
And Michelle Martin, we see you. Usually you're just lurking, but we see you now. So our clerk recording secretary. I'm Chuck Anderson, chair. I'll ask Fred to read the notice of public hearing.
Okay, uh, legal notice, Town of Branford. The Planning and Zoning Commission of the Town of Branford, Connecticut hereby gives notice of public hearings to be held on Thursday, November twenty first, two thousand and twenty four at seven P M. By remote technology to consider the applications listed below. Information regarding how to participate in the public hearings will be provided on the commission's meeting agenda that will be posted on the town's website at least twenty-four hours prior to the meeting. Application number twenty-four dash seven point five, special exception for grading, section six point eight for a single family. Residents located at thirty-eight Howard Avenue, Charles Watts, applicant and owner. Application number twenty-four dash nine, uh, point seven, special exception for an accessory structure located at six Buena Vista Road, Phil Sullivan, applicant and owner. Application twenty-four dash ten point one, special exception for an accessory structure garage located at twenty-one Burr Street, Melinda Formica, applicant and owner. Application twenty-four dash ten point five, special exception for an accessory apartment located at forty-three and forty-nine Summer Island Road, Madison Cassessi, uh, applicant and owner. And application twenty-four dash eleven point two, P, uh, P D D, Plan Development District, modification for changes to allow uses in the P B D, P D D located at four to twelve Brushy Plains Road, Brushy Plains Plaza LLC, applicant and owner. At said hearings, all persons will have the right to be heard. Copies are on file in the Planning and Zoning Commission's office at the Planning and Zoning Department, ten nineteen Main Street, Branford, Connecticut, oh six four oh five. Written communications may be sent to the above address or to planning and zoning at branford-dashct.gov. Bramford Planning and Zoning Commission, Seandres Chairperson.
Chuck Anderson, thank you, Fred.
You're welcome.
We'll follow our normal format for public hearings, which is the applicant goes first, makes its presentation. You can do screen sharing, use any, uh, individual or consultants make the presentation. After that, we turn it over to the commission staff, typically hear a summary of a sound report, reviewed it for us, open it up for questions or comments from commission members. After that portion is done, we open it up to the public, and I'll ask Evan to explain in a little bit how to go about participating in this Zoom public hearing, if you're a member of the public. After the public portion is done, we allow the applicant to respond to any of the public portion, and we may have further questions or comments from commission members. We may or may not close the public hearing depending on how it goes. It's not unusual to have a public hearing extend over multiple nights. So with that, we'll get started with a continued public hearing, which is, uh, numbers one and two. This is premier three hundred North Main Realty LLC, applicant owner, two hundred, two hundred and six worth Main Street. This is special exception for auto service facility and a special exception for grading. I think we started this at our meeting on, uh, November seventh, and, uh, we're going to continue with that. Saf can ready to proceed?
Yes, Mr. Chairman. Um, uh, for the record, I, I'm Mike Ott. I'm a licensed professional engineer and land surveyor with Summer Hill Civil Engineers and Land Surveyors in Madison. Um, and Mr. Mr. Alvin is here also with me tonight. Um, uh, as you said, Mr. Chairman, we, we started this, I think, in early November. Um, town staff had given us some, uh, review comments. I believe we've addressed them all. Um, I've been uh, communicating with Evan, um, and I, I'm quite sure that we've, um, Evan can confirm, but I'm quite sure that we've addressed his review comments. I think the, if the commission remembers, the, probably the major comments were uh, that we designate, um, ten parking spaces on the site plan to be used for employees and visitors. Um, we, we've done that. I can, I could share my screen and show the commission. And I think that the other, um, um, big comment was that we get some advice from a landscape professional uh, regarding the landscape plan, and we, we've done that, and we revised, uh, the landscape plan per, per that advice. Um, we also made some modifications to the exterior lighting photometric plan, which we've, um, submitted to Evan also. So, um, I, I'd be glad to, if the commission would like, I could share my screen and, and show you those changes, if that makes sense, or, or answer any questions that you might have.
Uh, cer- certainly, Mr. Ott, if you think that would be helpful, please go right ahead. I assume it won't take too long, so, sure.
Okay. Yeah, I'll, I'll try to make it quick. Um, if I can share my screen. Okay, um, can the commission see my screen now?
Yes.
Okay, so I'll just, um, I'll just scroll down and to the general site plan and, and zoom in a bit and show the commission, um. These are, uh, if you can see my cursor moving, these are the ten parking spaces that we've um, designated on the plans for employees and visitors. Um, me, let me zoom back out and I'll scroll to another plan where they're actually, um, they're actually labeled that way on the plan. This is probably a lot clearer. So those are the, those are the ten spaces that we designated. Um, and the landscape plan, uh, if I can zoom back out, wrong way. Uh, this is the revised landscape plan. Um, we've added a planting bed along the western side of the building. If the commission can see my cursor moving up and down. Um, we also added these gray shaded areas that you see along the North Main Street frontage or planting beds. We, we've added those and, uh, changed, changed some of the plant material uh, per the landscape architect's advice. Um, and I, Evan has seen this, um, uh, as well as the revised site plan with the ten parking spaces and as well as our revised, um, photometric plan. And I, I believe, I, as I said earlier, I believe we've addressed, uh, all of the comments, but I'll, of course, let, let Evan confirm that for you.
Chuck Anderson, thank you, Mr. Ott. Evan, do you want to review your staff report with us?
Uh, sure. Uh, like Mr. Ott said, all of my comments from the F board have been addressed. Uh, I'll just run through them real quick. Um, they did, uh, get a landscape architect, uh, to provide some input on their design. They added some front landscaping beds as well as one on the western side, uh, which, uh, that combined with the existing vegetation in the rear and on the opposite side, uh, satisfied the side and rear, uh, landscaping regulations. Um, I did request, uh, replacement sky pencil holly, uh, bushes uh, that were along the roadway, and Mike had already updated the plan uh, to, uh, include that change, uh, prior to the night's meeting. Um, they meet the off-street parking requirements um, as well as the lighting standards. Uh, they, uh, appear to meet the special exception criteria, and there, um, uh, drainage plan was sent to the town engineer, uh, for comments. Uh, they did not have any issues with the proposed, uh, drainage system. Um, and they did submit the extra special exception, uh, for the, for the proposed, uh, excavation and grading next to the wetland. Uh, staff recommends one finding that finds, uh, the proposed use is consistent with the special exception. Um, and the following condition, one, all conditions of the previous approval shall remain in full force and effect. Uh, two, any lighting has to be compliant with section six point seven. Um, three, all landscaping must be maintained as an ongoing requirement of this approval. And the fourth condition was that the sky pencil, uh, trees had to be, um, but since they made that change already, I can remove that condition.
Chuck Anderson, thank you, Evan. Questions or comments from commission members before we open it up to the public? Hearing none? Evan, can you, because I think I skipped over you. Can you just run over the process for public participation?
Uh, sure. Down at the bottom of my screen, there's a raise hand button. Uh, please click that. If you'd like to speak, you can also type into the chat that you want to make any comments. Raise your hand in front of the, in front of the camera, and I'll try to catch. I do not see any.
Okay. I think we did get, uh, one letter in support from, uh, economic development. Is that correct?
Yes.
Um, okay, so, uh, it doesn't look like there are any public comment. Are there any additional comments by the applicant?
Uh, no, I don't think so, Mr. Chairman.
Any additional questions or comments from commission members or staff?
Nope.
Hearing none, then I think we can close these items as a public hearing. Maybe we'll take it up later. These are again items number one and two. So thank you very much, Mr. Ott.
Thank you very much.
Uh, brings us to item number three on our agenda, which is Charles Watts, applicant owner, thirty-eight Howard Avenue, special exception for grading, single-family residents. My understanding, Evan, on this one is that we're going to open this public hearing and continue it to our December nineteenth meeting. Is that correct?
That's correct.
Okay, so if you're here on that one, that's item number three, thirty-eight Howard Avenue. We are simply opening this without testimony, and we'll continue it to our December meeting, which is on December nineteenth. With that, then, let's go to item number four, which is Phil Sullivan, applicant and owner, six Buena Vista Road. This is a special exception for an accessory structure. Is the applicant ready for this one?
Uh, good evening. Jim Preddy, Criscolo Engineering, uh, four twenty East Main Street in Branford, uh, representing, uh, Phil Sullivan and, uh, Jennifer Costco Sullivan. I'm gonna share my screen. Let's see if I can, um, cut to this. You see the map, hopefully?
Yes.
Okay, so this is the, uh, existing residence at, um, six Plano Vista. Um, what we're looking to do is, um, construct this proposed barn here. Uh, it is under the seven hundred and fifty square feet, but it is a little more than the fifteen foot high. Um, this is not unlike many of the applications I brought in in the last few years. Um, they're looking for additional storage space, so there's a, there's a second floor uh, unfinished space that, uh, with a stair in the back for access. Uh, as you can see, um, we have kept it behind the building as, as normally required uh, for an accessory structure, and we've been able to tuck it into the corner of the setback so that we didn't need any variances. Um, for the structure, uh, we went to the Stony Creek Architectural Review Board, and they had a couple of minor suggestions about, um, you know, the color of the canopy matching the, 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 um, porch canopy, uh, which was already in the works. Um, this is, um, again, similar to other, um, applications we brought forward. Um, uh, I know next door, number ten, we got a special exception for, uh, the height of the garage there. And over here, this other joiner, um, you, you folks approved the special exception for uh, a barn structure there. That's, um, actually quite a bit higher than this one. Um, we do have the plans. You can see this is what the building's going to look like. Um, there's a kind of a rendering type thing over here, and we are twenty foot seven, um, where the fifteen foot is allowed by right. Uh, and that's, that's more or less it.
Uh, thank you, Mr. Preddy, and I assume this is not for human occupancy. It's just a, a accessory structure.
That's correct.
Right, okay. Are there, uh, uh, Evan, do you want to review the staff report with us? Start with that.
Uh, sure, uh, this is before us because the accessory is fifteen feet in height. I believe it's twenty-four feet. Uh, they meet the bulk requirements of the R four district. Um, they meet the off-street requirements. Um, any lighting will have to be compliant with section six point seven, uh, based on the application materials. It appears they meet the special exception criteria. Uh, they appeared before the Stony Creek Architectural Review Board on November sixth. Uh, they issued a positive recommend on conditions. Any future mechanical equipment in the rear of the proposed structure, board and batten siding shall be used on the front and western side of the accessory structure as depicted on the submitted elevations, and all lighting shall be night sky compliant. Um, I put that into a condition of this approval. Uh, I also proposed one finding that the commission, uh, finds the proposed use is consistent with the special exception criteria along with the, the following conditions. One, this exclusively applies to the construction of a detached garage that includes a second floor accessory apartment or additional unit. No change in use from the approved single-family home as a part of this application, and the addition of any units or an accessory apartment would need to be approved by the Planning and Zoning Commission. Uh, condition two, prior to the start of construction, erosion will be installed, and any, uh, additional measures vary by the zoning enforcement officer. Uh, condition three, any lighting has to be compliant with section six point seven, and per the positive recommendation of the Stony Creek Architectural Review Board, uh, any mechanicals have to be screened. Uh, the board and batten has to be used on the sides of the structure. It was proposed, uh, in the elevations, and all lighting has to be night sky compliant.
Great. Chuck Anderson, thank you, Evan. Questions, comments from anyone before we open up to the public?
I, I hate to be that guy, but just in the interest of disambiguation and editorial, uh, consistency, it's, uh, board and batten is a B A T T E N, as in battening down the hatches. As, as spell checker, you know, the A I in the, uh, the word processor took over, it wrote, wrote down baton, which is, I mean, kind of goofy if you're, if you're really looking at what it is. So it's, it's, it's a minor change. It's totally editorial, but I, I, I couldn't let that go. Sorry.
That might have been me.
We, we forgive you, Joe. Where is that? Is that, I assume it's one of the conditions?
There, there are, there are two mentions of it in there in the conditions and in the uh, section after the Stony Creek Architectural Review Board and board and batten siding. And it's, it's battening down the hatches, two Ts, E N, as opposed to a ceremonial stick that you throw up in the air with if you're a drum majorate.
Won't happen again.
No, no, I, 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 like I said, I hate to be that guy, but it's, it's.
We, we, we need at least one of us to be that guy, you know, why does not me? Okay, um, anyone else, uh, have any comments before we open up to the public? Hearing none, then let's, uh, open it up to the public. Does any member of the comment, of the public wish to comment? And, uh, looks like, uh, Evan, it looks like somebody's raising their hand.
Uh, yes, Mr. Hayden.
Yeah, this is Chuck Hayden. We, uh, we live on two fourteen Thimble Island Road, and we bought of the property there, and, uh, we have no objection to the, uh, structure that they're proposing, so we're that's, uh, it's fine with us.
Chuck Anderson, thank you, Mr. Hayden. Other members of the public wish to comment? See anyone, Evan?
Uh, I do not see anybody.
Okay. Okay, I guess we can close the public portion. Mr. Preddy, you got any, uh, additional comments you'd like to make?
No, sir, I think I'm all set.
Okay, any other questions, comments from commission members or staff? Uh, okay, then, uh, hearing none, then I guess we can close this matter as a public hearing, and again, this may be something we can take up on a little bit. Thank you, Mr. Preddy. So then, uh, that brings us to item number five, which is, uh, Melinda Formica, applicant and owner for twenty-one Burr Street. This is a special exception, another accessory structure garage. Uh, Saf can ready to proceed?
Uh, yes, uh, me again, Jim Preddy, four twenty East Main Street, Branford. Um, this is a similar situation. Um, I will, let's see, let's get to the share. Uh, hopefully you're looking at the map again. Um, so, uh, this is kind of a very unique lot on the corner here. They have very little frontage and, and, uh, basically ledge kind of outcropping all around here. Uh, there was very little opportunity for this house to, um, to build a garage, so we had to get a couple of variances. Um, uh, there were some variances for this deck, um, that was approved, and some variances for the garage, which included its location, um, with regards to the sideline and the fact that it is not behind the house. Um, but it is the same thing, uh, as the last one. We are under the seven hundred and fifty square feet, but we're a little bit over the, the, uh, fifteen foot high, um, and so we're here for a special exception for the height.
Chuck Anderson, thank you, uh, Mr. Preddy. Uh, Evan, you want to review the staff report with us?
Uh, sure, like Mr. Uh, Mr. Preddy stated, uh, another structure in height, um, they received a number of variants via on September seventeenth. Um, they meet the parking requirement, uh, based on the application materials. It appears that the special exception criteria are satisfied. Um, staff recommends one finding that the use is consistent with the special exception criteria, uh, along with the following conditions. This approval exclusively action of a detached garage that includes a second floor, not to be very apartment or additional unit. No change in use from the single-family home as a part of this application, and the addition of any units or an accessory apartment will need to be approved by the commission. Uh, condition two, prior to the start of construction, erosion control measures shall be installed, uh, or any other additional measures deemed necessary by the zoning enforcement officer, and any lighting has to be compliant with section six point seven.
Chuck Anderson, thank you, Evan. Uh, questions, comments from commission members before we open up to the public? Hearing none, then let's, uh, open up the public. Do any member of the public wish to comment on this application? Evan, you see anybody?
I don't see anybody.
Okay. Okay, then I guess we can close the public portion. Does, uh, applicant, Mr. Preddy, any further comments?
No, all set. Thank you.
Any further questions, comments from commission members or staff?
No.
Hearing none? What? None? Okay. Then, uh, we can close this matter as a public hearing and hopefully take up a little bit. Uh, thank you, Mr. Preddy.
Thank you.
Brings us into item number six, which is Madison uh, Cassessi, I guess, forty-three and forty-nine Summer Island Road. Uh, special exception for an accessory apartment. And I understand the request here is that we open and continue this matter, Evan. Does that sound right?
That's correct.
Okay, so, uh, we're, we're going to open and continue this matter. If you're here on that one, we'll continue to our next meeting, which again is on December nineteenth. Is that correct, Evan? That is, that is, okay. So, uh, we will, uh, continue item number six to our December nineteenth meeting. It brings into item number seven, which is Brushy Plain Plaza LLC, four twelve Brushy Plain Road. It's a P D D master plan modification. Is, uh, the applicant ready to proceed on that one?
I do not see the applicant. Um, let me bring up the site plan.
Who is the app?
Tim Lee is the app.
Oh, Tim Lee, okay. Yeah, you, we, we can defer this if he, I mean, I, we can wait a bit and then just bring it up again, see if he shows up, give him a little bit.
All right, I, I can reach out to him as well.
Okay. Okay, then, um, while we're waiting, maybe we can address some of the items where we've heard in public hearings. Um, first one was items number one and two. Again, this is the uh, special exception for the automobile service facility and two hundred, two oh six North Main Street, special exception for grading. Again, uh, this is the premier applications. Um. Evan, you gonna pull up that staff report?
You guys do?
Yeah, and I can can we adopt this as our decision on both applications?
Yes.
Okay. Okay, does anyone have any questions? We kind of went through this at the public hearing. Again, we opened it, there was questions, I think we recommended. Cause we're we're big on landscaping that they get a landscape consultant. They did that, they made some changes. They uh filled in some details about the employee parking. I think those are the two outstanding items. There's letters in support. Any comments from anyone? Commission members on this? If if there aren't any, does someone want to make a motion that we adopt the staff recommendations? Again, the findings and the uh decision. Uh, did you need to um delete item number one under there because they already did that or what?
Yes.
Okay, so so it's delete condition three because they already fixed that one. So it's uh.
Oh, boy.
The. And he and he had to get the renumbering, right? So. So the the motion would be to approve the applications, both the applications, the special exception. And the special exception for automobile service facility and the special exception for grading by adopting. The staff recommended findings and conditions. Again, there are three of them. We got those renumbered correctly and four is deleted as and it's as presently presented to us on the screen in front of us. Which is also the same as was sent to us in our staff report, except we deleted number three. So I'm gonna make that motion.
Chadwick will make that motion.
Motion to approve by Joe Chadwick, sir, second.
Marcy will second.
Second by Marcy. Any further discussion? And it looks like uh everyone's voting, Sharon, you're voting uh tonight. Um. No further discussion, all those in favor, Joe Chadwick?
Joe Chadwick will make that, uh, I'm in favor.
Okay, Fred?
Fred's in favor.
Marcy?
Marcy's in favor.
Sharon?
Sharon is in favor.
And the chair is also in favor, so that application is approved. Um, any um progress with Tim Lee, Evan?
Uh, no, uh, don't have a cell number that could reach out to him.
Yeah, I'm sure his thing is done. Okay, well, then let's move on to the next one, which is item number four. This was six Wayna Vista, the first of our accessory oversized accessory structure. Are you pulling that one up, Evan?
Yes.
Okay.
And uh, took care of that spelling error.
Okay. Okay, again, fairly straightforward, no public, oh, I think there was one comment in favor actually, or in support or no objection. Fairly uh minor here. Um, if no one has any comments, does someone want to make a motion to approve the application by adopting the staff? Recommendation findings and condition as corrected.
Fred Russo will make that motion.
Motion by Fred to approve, sir, second.
Chadwick seconds.
Second, Joe Chadwick. Any further discussion? All is in favor, Joe Chadwick?
Joe Chadwick is in favor.
Fred Russo?
Fred Russo's in favor.
Marcy?
Marcy's in favor.
Sharon?
Sharon is in favor.
And chair is also in favor, so that application is approved. Let's move then to the next one, which is our public hearing number five. This is Melinda Formica, twenty one Burr Street. It's another special exception for an accessory structure. Evan, can you pull that one up?
Oops.
Okay, similar, uh, looks like uh. There there was no public comment on this application. Appears that it satisfied the regulations. Uh, and fairly minor application. Does uh, anyone have any comments? And if not, does someone want to make a motion to approve the application by adopting the? Staff recommended findings and conditions in the staff report that Evan has presently displaying in front of us.
Fred Russo will make that motion.
Motion approved by Fred, sir, second.
Chadwick seconds.
Second by Joe Chadwick. Any further discussion? All is in favor, Joe Chadwick?
Joe Chadwick is in favor.
Fred?
Fred Russo in favor.
Marcy?
Marcy's in favor.
Sharon?
Sharon is in favor.
And chair is also in favor, so that application is approved. Um, okay, it looks like uh we still don't have uh Tim Lee. Maybe we'll we'll just keep going down the agenda and bring it back up if he shows up. Or maybe you can present it, uh, Evan, if he doesn't show up. But let's um, uh, let's go down. Uh, next item is our minutes from our November seventh meeting. Um, if you, if everyone has had a chance to review those. And if so, does someone want to make a motion with respect to the minutes of November seventh?
Sharon Hutton moves that we approve the minutes of November seventh.
Sharon makes motion to approve the November seven minutes, is there a second?
Chadwick will second.
Second by Joe Chadwick. Any further discussion? All those in favor, Joe Chadwick?
Joe Chadwick is in favor.
Fred?
Fred Russo in favor.
Marcy?
Marcy's in favor.
Sharon?
Sharon is in favor.
Chair is also in favor. Correspondence, Evan?
Uh, we did receive uh one piece of information on a cell phone tower equipment replacement at one eighty, one eighty four North Main Street. Looks like they're just uh swapping out some and some one type of antenna with another type of antenna.
Okay, that's a, that's good to know. Okay, it looks like I see Mr. Lee uh's shadow in the background there. So perhaps we can go back to our number seven public hearing. And continue with that one, that is Brushy Plain Plaza LLC, four twelve. Flush, a Brushy Plain Road, a PDD master plan modification. Uh, looking, driving in the car, Mr. Lee, you ready proceed?
Thank you, and thank you for waiting for me. I had a meeting and he saved it that I just got done with, so I'm sitting in my car in the parking lot. After last two, last month's meeting, I figured I it wouldn't be heard till about midnight. So I thought I had a lot of time, so, but I'm happy to be heard at seven thirty. So I represent uh Brushy Plains. Uh, for the record, my name is attorney Timothy Lee. I represent the applicant Brushy Plains Plaza LLC. And they're the owners of the property that is the subject matter of this application. Uh, the Brushy Plains is a Bigliotti family entity. And in um, two thousand and ten, Bob Criscolo, the engineer. Uh, submitted an application to create a PDD on behalf of Brushy Plains. Um, that would allow for some residential units and then ultimately some and some commercial units. It'd be a mixed use development. In two thousand and fourteen, uh, Bob Criscolo came back to the commission seeking a modification to the um. PDD to increase the number of residential units. Ultimately, the number of residential units, well, some of the commercial space would then would become residential. Planning and zoning commission approved the PDD in two thousand and ten and they approved the uh amendment to the PDD in twenty fourteen. For whatever reason, the the number of residential units. That currently exist on site are seventy one. And that does not match the number that was in the PDD in two thousand and ten. Or what the amendment in twenty fourteen. And for the life of me, we cannot figure out why it doesn't match. Um, and this came to light because the Brushy Plains was trying to do a refinance of the property. As part of the refinance, the bank's council had to do the zoning due diligence. They went through the town records and they determined that the PDD. Allowed for either sixty four or sixty eight units, but there were seventy one units that that are being residential units being occupied. Uh, so the lender asked us to go back to planning and zoning to ha- seek a modification of the PDD. So that's what we're here doing tonight. Um, and the 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 history of the the PDD is is. Unclear as to how many units were ultimately approved by P and Z. However, I will say the town has issued COs for seventy one units. So I just want to be clear, this is not a case where the applicant snuck in extra units that that were not permitted. For whatever reason, the applicant, I mean, the applicant went through the process. They initially went through zoning, when zoning approved it, they went to building. Uh, they built out seventy one units over the course of that time. They received building permits for the seventy one, well, there are some units that are existing. They they received building permits for the additional units and they received COs for the additional units. So there are seventy one units with COs at this particular property. But the zoning doesn't seem to correspond to that seventy one units. So the purpose of our application today is to seek an amendment of the PDD. To officially allow in the text of the PDD. Uh, for a total of seventy one residential units, which will match what exists on the site today. And what my client has COs for. Uh, we're not seeking any additional units or any additional development at the property. We're just trying to clear up this clerical error so that they can go ahead and refinance the property.
Chuck Anderson, sir, thank you, Mr. Lee. So is this a, is it an application to amend the PDD master plan? What about the site plan? Is that, uh, you know, is that okay or?
Yeah, the site plan is okay. It's 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 the same site plan that was approved in twenty fourteen. It's just the the authorizing language in the in the PDD text.
Oh.
Mentions either, i- it's a little confusing, either sixty four units or maybe sixty eight units. But there are seventy one units that that exist. So we're seeking that amendment to allow the the seventy one units to. That exists to be reflected in the language of the PDD.
Okay. Um, Evan, you want to review the staff report with us?
Uh, sure, like attorney Lee had described for us, um, you know, somewhere. The exact number of units that this PDD was approved for got lost. They lost track of that number. Between nineteen eighty five and two thousand and fourteen, there was a number of special exception approvals for difference amounts, different amounts of. Um, uh, units to be approved, sometimes subtracting some units, sometimes adding some. Um, but they've had a mix of uh commercial and residential uses on this property uh for a number of decades. Um, they're now seeking to legalize that final number of seventy one residential units. Uh, this is um a modification master plan uh uses. Uh, and so it is all the zoning map amendment procedures from section nine, ten. Um, the application was referred to the town sanitary. Uh, the police commission, uh, fire marshal and town engineer. We did receive responses from the police commission, fire marshal and town engineer, all who had no issues with uh the proposed change. Um, there are no specific references to the plan of conservation development related to this change. Um, since the review process for this application is the same, uh, is that zoning map amendment procedure. The commission is required to find that the proposed amendments to the zone are consistent with the comprehensive plan. Uh, this consists of the zoning regs and the zoning map, uh, the history of how they developed and the pattern of development. Development uh created by them. Um, the applicant, like I said, is coming in to change that number of units from sixty four to seventy one. Um, they meet the parking requirements required for that. Um, staff does not have any concerns about the proposed amendment. Um, and uh, um, the commission may approve the application. Um, uh, as is or with modification, in either case, the commission must find that the uh it has considered the. And development and this decision is in accordance with that comp plan I mentioned. And an effective date uh for the amendment might uh need to be established. Staff recommends uh establishment date of December first, twenty twenty four. Um, and including the following findings and conditions. Uh, just one finding that the commission finds that the proposed modification to the PDD uh at four twenty. And road uses as proposed in this application are consistent with. The section five, four of the zoning regulations, uh, section nine, ten F of the zones. The comprehensive plan of the town of Branford. And the twenty nineteen uh plan of conservation and development has been considered in the rendering of this decision. Uh, and one condition that all previous conditions uh of approvals shall remain in full force and effect.
Thank, thank you, Evan. Uh, questions or comments from commission members or staff before we open up to the public? Hearing none, let's open it up to the public. Does any member of the public wish to comment on this item? Okay, you don't see anyone, Evan, right?
I do not see anybody.
Okay. Uh, Mr. Lee, do you have any uh comments?
No, I I I don't, I appreciate the the indulgence and hopefully uh this this helps clear up the the confusion. So we appreciate that Evan's been great over the last month to try to figure this whole thing out. Uh, so we appreciate his help and we ask that you uh approve the modification.
Okay, and you're good with the findings, there's a condition, is that okay with the text? Or whatever, it's close, yeah?
We're not opposed to it.
Okay, okay, it just says that all previous conditions remain in effect. Okay, um. Then I think uh, a- any other further comments from commission, commission members or staff? Hearing none, we'll close this matter as a public hearing. Thank you very much, Mr. Lee, and I think uh we can take it up since that's where we are in the agenda. So are there anyone that has any uh comment on this uh proposed amendment to the PDD? It looks like something just got lost and uh. Uh, the the idea is to make it legal. Um, so that they can get their refinancing is what it sounds like. Um, so the bank can have a nice security interest. So uh, any, anyone have any thoughts about this one? And if not, does someone want to make a motion? Evan, you want to pull up the staff recommendations?
Sure, Fred Russo will make the motion, I think it's a no brainer.
Okay, so you're gonna make a motion to approve the applica- the application to amend. The uh PDD master plan for Brushy Plain Plaza by adopting the finding. And condition with an effective date of December one, twenty twenty four. Is that right, Fred?
Correct.
Okay, so Fred made that motion, sir, second.
Chadwick will second.
Second by Joe Chadwick. Any further discussion? All is in favor, Joe Chadwick?
Joe Chadwick is in favor.
Fred Russo?
Fred Russo's in favor.
Marcy?
Marcy's in favor.
Sharon? Where's Sharon?
Sorry, Sharon is in favor.
Thank you, Sharon. And chair is also in favor, so that application is approved, thank you, Mr. Lee. Okay, so going on to old business, we have one, one old business item, sixty seven Cedar Street. We need to get a public hearing for that one. And uh, so uh, we typically work it out with staff, but uh maybe at our next meeting, Evan, you think, or what?
Yes, that sounds good.
Okay. And then we have two items of new business and uh again. Uh, with those, those just came in, we will need to set uh, at least for item number two, a public hearing. The three lot subdivision may or may not need a public hearing. But um, you've got to review that review that one further and send out some legal notices, right? For that one, so that's.
That's correct.
Probably looking at January for that because we got to get the the time period file. So then that brings us then to other business. Item number one is the subdivision financial guarantee bond establishment. Uh, this modification of the previously set amount that was never posted for one seventy five Cherry Hill Road. I know this was at the end of last meeting around midnight and we deferred it. And uh, since then, I think, uh, Evan, you did send out a memo on that. You want to review that with us, uh?
Uh, sure, um, so application uh established. On July twentieth, twenty twenty three, in the amount of eight hundred or eight hundred and twelve thousand and thirty dollars and thirty three cents. Uh, for the completion of street improvements, public utilities and other requirements. Uh, the applicant then modified the approval uh to change to conditional approval, no financial guarantee provided. And the signature block on that uh might. Provided and the signature block on that uh, might. Uh, stated no lot shall be sold and no certificate of. Be issued until the improvements and other requirements are complete or financial guarantee has been provided. Uh, the applicant is now requesting a bond reduction based upon uh, completed site work. Um, in the amount of six hundred and nine thousand, seven hundred and eighty seven dollars and fifty. Totalling uh, the new bond amount to be two hundred and two thousand, two hundred and forty two dollars and eighty cents. Uh, staff recommends a reduction. Um, we've had uh, the town engineer or the engineering department look this over as well. Um, and uh, based on the submitted request, uh, approval of town engineer. Um, and yeah, that's about it. I don't know if uh, Tim and Zach maybe want to weigh in?
Uh, Tim Lee on behalf of the applicant. Now, I I think Evan pretty much summarized it at all. My client completed the the majority of the subdivision approvals without posting a bond as he's allowed to do under states. The changes to the state statute. He's now interested in conveying some of the lots out because he's interested in conveying the lots out. He now needs to post the bond. However, because he's done the work, the the bond amount should be reduced accordingly. So we ask the commission to adopt uh, Evan's recommendations.
Thank you, Mr. Lee. Any questions or comments from uh, commission members? Hearing none then, does, does someone want to make a motion that we uh, establish uh. A bond, I guess we're not reducing it because it was never actually filed, but uh. But a bond in the amount of two hundred, two thousand, two hundred and forty two dollars and eighty cents. Uh, as recommended by staff and the town engineer.
Fred Russo will make that motion.
Motion to establish that bond by, about by Fred, is there a second?
Marcy will second.
Second by Marcy. Any further discussion? All those in favor, Joe Chadwick?
Joe Chadwick is in favor.
Fred Russo?
Fred Russo is in favor.
Marcy?
Marcy's in favor.
Sharon?
Sharon is in favor.
And Chair is also in favor. So.
Thank you.
Thank, thank you, Mr. Lee. Uh, brings us now to item number two, which is the approval of the twenty twenty five meeting schedule. Um, that is uh, I think that was sent out last time and this time probably as well. And I think it's pretty standard. Was there anything uh? I don't think there was anything. Normally, it's it's the two, two weeks uh. Two meetings a month, first and and third Thursdays. Except for August, no meeting and one meeting in December. And um. There's a several, a few exceptions, uh, whether there's a holiday. I don't, and there were no uh, there were no Jewish holidays, right, this time?
No.
Right. Thank you for that.
Right, so. So does anyone have any uh? I mean, it's a standard session. We can always do a special meeting if we need to.
Chuck, Fred Russo?
Yes.
I think we should put on August after no meeting a question mark.
Well, we gotta establish a meeting. I mean, we we can always do a meeting. We, and we have some years. We just, we just do a special meeting.
I know.
Yeah, right, but but you're right.
Every year.
Right, right. We we've done it all the time, but who knows? Maybe, right? Yeah, it would be interesting, the July third meeting, you know, that's uh, interesting, so. Okay, well, there's uh. Someone just want to make a motion that we approve the proposed uh, two and a twenty, twenty twenty five meeting dates?
Sharon Hutner moves that we approve the two thousand twenty five meeting dates.
Motion made to approve by Sharon, is there a second?
Marcy will second.
Second, Marcy. Any further discussion? All those in favor, Joe Chadwick?
Joe Chadwick is in favor.
Fred?
Brad's in favor.
Marcy?
Favor.
Sharon?
Sharon is in favor.
And Chair is also in favor. Brings us then to planners report. What do you got, Evan?
Uh, I thought we could discuss the election of uh, the planning and zoning commission's officers. Uh, I believe somebody has to poll the rest of the members uh, so that we can vote at the December nineteenth meeting.
As uh, as you may recall, we did, we we have bylaws, uh. No one, no one is stuck in their position forever. We have annual meetings, uh. Uh, once a year, and your term will last for a year until you're replaced. We traditionally do them. I think that bylaws say that it's the meeting in December that we do it. And what we traditionally do is have one of the alternates kind of poll people and come up with a uh, a slate. And uh, we discuss it at our December meeting. So I think, uh, Sharon, since you're here.
Yes, and also I think Massimo did it last time, so. Any way you look at it.
Any way you look at it, you're up, so.
Right, exactly.
So expect a contact by uh, Sharon, um.
Okay, it has to be, and that has to be all done by the meeting, the nineteenth?
Yeah, yeah, we'll, we'll, we'll probably vote, we'll have a really contested election on our, on the nineteenth.
Right.
And uh, you know, so.
Got to get our, our lawn signs out.
That's right, right, right. So yeah, we got to do that, so um. So that's coming up. What else you got for planners report, uh, Evan? I got one thing when you don't.
Yeah, would, do you want to take it from here?
Sure, I'll take it from here. I did get an email from uh, our first selectman requesting that uh. We appoint Evan Briening uh, as our interim town planner because right now there's uh. Harry is no longer, you know, he's, I, he, he'll be here part time in some capacity, but he's not full time. And it would not be in a town planner official position. We don't have a town planner. I think there is a, you know, a search committee out there. HR is out doing something, but but nothing's there, so in the meantime. We want to give uh, best authority for Evan in this. I mean, doing it anyway, but uh, it's always good to have the. Authority, in case anything ever should have come up. So the motion would be uh. That someone make a motion to approve Evan Briening as our interim town planner.
Fred Russo will make that motion.
Motion by Fred, is there a second?
Chadwick seconds.
Second, Joe Chadwick. Any further discussion? All those in favor, Joe Chadwick?
Joe Chadwick is in favor.
Fred?
Fred Russo is definitely in favor.
Marcy?
Marcy's in favor.
And Sharon?
Sharon is in favor.
And Chair is also in favor. So uh, anything else, uh, Evan?
That's it.
Okay, speaking of Harry, he did give me some, we, we, we are going to, the plan was to uh. Um, go out to dinner with him. I sent him an email. He gave back some dates and I asked Sharon to help me out since. We were talking together and unfortunately. It's a tight time of year and the dates weren't good, so I've asked Harry for some additional dates. It may actually be. I don't know, may end up being in January just because it's, it's kind of difficult, but that's still something we intend to do. So, you know, we would invite also the alumni, uh, John Lust and Paul, I think. As well as uh, the staff. And uh, the thought would be to go at, you know, we can talk further. Talk to, where do you want to go? Um, and uh, you know, someplace where we can get a, a table for whatever. Ten or twelve or whatever we end up being. Um, and uh. If people have ideas, probably something local. Um, I tried to get some preference from him, but it could be. Could be home, could be, I don't know, we've done Thimble Island, although I don't know if he can reserve spots there, so I I'm just a little unsure. So. If anyone has any ideas, uh, we'll, we will be in touch. We'll probably start a thread once we get some dates so we can. Debate it, you know, get it a little further. The other thought is I'd like to give him a gift card for something, either a restaurant or even just a. You know, visa that he could use at a restaurant, just something like that.
Are we taking dinner or drinks?
Uh, dinner. I'd like to take him out.
So Cafe Fury has a lot of space.
Right, yeah, I I had mentioned that and, you know, he he's just, because I think that is uh, it's a nice place.
Hmm.
But he said, but but, and it's great food, but he said, well, I'm not that crazy about Italian, so.
Well, there goes La Monaco's.
Right, right.
Archie Morris?
Yeah, yeah, if you can get a space in Archie Morris.
Well, yeah.
I'd be good at place.
Yeah.
Donovan's? Where Donovan's used to be?
Yeah, that may be expensive.
Not the snake side, the other side.
Yeah, I mean, they're both expensive, I think.
Yeah, I think home is a real good idea.
Yeah.
Home's nice.
Yeah, yeah, and you can go in the back and probably get a table.
Yeah.
Yeah. One thing about Branford, there's no shortage of uh, good places to eat.
That's true.
Do you like Indian food?
Oh, I.
Darbar, actually.
Yeah, Darbar, but has limited seating now, but yeah, the other place isn't bad either, although.
You could do seafood, Dockside or Lenny's.
Dockside is closed.
Dockside's closed, yeah.
Okay, so Lenny's would work.
Yeah, Lenny's is excellent, but yeah. Yeah, I don't know if, how you arrange the tables for, can you put like a ten table in?
Oh, yeah, they do it all the time. They just stack them in a long, you know.
Okay, we'll try to feel them out, see what he wants.
Well, see what kind of food he likes. That's the, that's sort of the tip off.
Yep. Okay, um, while, while we're talking, one, one thing I've, I've mentioned. Off and on, and I mentioned first selectman, the idea of possibly doing hybrid meetings. Of, of, where, where I, I've seen it done in a number of towns. I probably mentioned this before. Um, where you can actually be in person and, but you could also participate fully remotely and. Have big screens and you can actually do it. Um, but. I'm, I'm just curious what other people are thinking these days. I mean, it's, it's gone smoothly remotely. It's great. You can do it wherever you are and. Don't have to dress up, uh, but you know, you don't see everyone and, you know, you lose a. I don't, there, there's pros and cons. Anyway, I, I, let me just ask people that are. Let me go around and see what people are thinking about recently. I'll start with you, Joe Chadwick, because you're always on the top of my list.
Okay, lucky me. Um, my, 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 I honestly, I have come to love the Zoom format. Um, the doc, whenever we get stuff in the mail. Um, it is scanned, it's pixelated to the point where you can't read it. In the middle of a meeting, I can put something up on a screen. I can blow it up as far as I can, I can see it. I, I, I don't have to have any ambiguity on what the material is I'm looking at. When we have an in-person presentation, we are never getting presented directly to. If there's a fine point on the drawing I want to see, it's like, I'm not going to see it and I can just be a total pain in the behind saying, now what's that again over there? And here I could just zoom into the screen and look at it. And I could, you know, satisfy myself that of, of whatever content is there. Um, this does not happen in a public meeting and. If it was a public meeting and we had the material that's distributed to us by staff, it's always. I said scanned, it's pixelated, it's very difficult to see uh, detail. So to the extent that I feel better informed working off of a screen. And in, in my situation, I'm still set up here from when I was working at home in the pandemic, so I've got three screens. Um, so I've got, you know, text, graphics and FaceTime going all at the same time. Um, this is perfect for me. Um, granted, it does not, I, we do not have the, you know, sort of pressing the flesh and uh, checking the mood of the population, but. Um, as, as far as, as, as cold calculated. Looking at drawings, understanding what the drawings are, checking the new, new, new information that came in. Um, this is perfect for me.
Great. Thanks, Joe. I appreciate that. Um, I, I will say, one, one thing I was, I'm a little. Feel a little sorry for Joe Vaiuso. Because I.
Yeah, that's.
I think, I think he's kind of on the other end, uh, where.
Yeah.
He's just like, no, you know, that, that's why I think maybe a hybrid or something where he could, you know, you could still work at home. And, and where, where I've seen hybrid work is where they also have a screen. And it's a decent screen, so you actually project stuff on a screen, but you could still be there, but, but yeah. Um, but no, I, those are all great points, Joe. Uh, Fred, what are your thoughts?
Well, you know, I, I would say that if you're going to do, doing the hybrid uh, format. The, the one problem I see is that you're going to have some people live and other people on screen and, and it would just seem that. As a commission, we should either all be there or we should all be at the same place. So as much as I, I like the concept of being hybrid, I, I think the, the. What it projects to the, to the public is, some people are not that interested to come to the meeting. There's other reasons why people. May not be able to be at that meeting. So I think I kind of agree with Joe, but my reason for liking the, the Zoom meetings. Because we get to see who's in the audience. You know, when we're in front of the audience, we're not, not that, you know, it. No, there's no sign in sheet, but I, I always make a, a, a note to look at the participation of who's there. And so you, you already got names, you've got uh, faces that makes it a little bit more familiar and, and it just seems that. It becomes, um, I don't know, maybe more businesslike this way, you know, people have, it just seems that those that come up to speak. Ha, are, are more concise in what they have to say. Often when they're at a, in a public hearing, they can go on and on and on and often. You know, three people say the same exact thing and it's just a consumption of time that, you know, and time is valuable. I mean, we know, we. We stay up sometimes very late to, to see these meetings through, so I think. Uh, as much as I like the idea of a hybrid meeting or even a face-to-face meeting, a, a, a all live meeting. I think in the end, uh, uh, the Zoom meeting still probably accomplishes more than the other two options.
Great. Thanks, Fred. Marcy?
As much as I miss you guys live, I'm much more comfortable at home. Um, you know. There's times I need to get up and grab a drink and I can still hear what's going on. There's plenty of times when I'm like Joe. Looking more closely on a detail, looking on my phone to see where the project actually is, which would, I think, not. Look right, you know, if I were live, they'd be like, why is she on her phone? I'm trying to figure out where, you know. Two hundred North Main is exactly, you know, or whatever it might be and um. You know, and then, and to Fred's point, you know, I do enjoy seeing who's in the audience. I do think in some ways, if the public's technologically comfortable, which isn't always the case. I think that it's less stressful for them than to stand up face to face like they're doing public speaking. Um, so we, I think there's a little bit more candor and, and um. You know, I think our input might be a little bit more relaxed as a result of that, so. Just, just a few thoughts. But I'm happy with the Zoom. To be honest, as long as the public is here.
Oh, Mar, oh, Marcy, Fred Russo, maybe we can have the meetings at your house?
There's not enough room.
Oh, okay.
And the dog barks every time an animal comes on the screen.
Okay.
Why do you think I mute so much?
I could bring my dog over and we could.
They would play. They would love each other for sure.
This is what happens when your meeting runs early.
Right, I, I, Sharon, what do you thought?
Oh, I definitely prefer the Zoom. Um, I'm often not home. And so I can actually get on to the meetings from other locations. Because all I need is a com, is a computer, so that really works for me. And I think we get more participants. Because it's Zoom, especially in the cold, dark winter months. When I think people may not want to come out to a meeting, but I think we get a lot of participation via Zoom. Because people, again, can just log on from their home, so I really do think that Zoom is um, is a good way to go.
Great. Well, I appreciate, I just wanted, I kind of suspected that, but I hadn't asked, so. And, and I still have, you know, poor Joe. Anyway, um, that's why I say maybe compromise, but who knows?
I think, I think we need to get him a computer with, or have him go to Evan's office so he can uh. Get on Harry's old screen or something.
Yeah, yeah, maybe we should. Okay, um, anyone else got anything?
Just happy Thanksgiving, everybody.
Yes.
Yeah.
Happy Thanksgiving.
Absolutely, okay.
Take travels if you're going anywhere.
Okay, great, great job, Evan, uh, you know, running the show here, so there you go.
Did uh, Harry get all the big applications done to like ease you in for the first couple of meetings at the end of the year, so? What's that?
This one was easy.
Look at that.
That feels strange not having Harry at our meeting, but uh, I, I wish him well.
He probably has the BCTV television on to watch to make sure we're all behaving and saying nice things.
He's a good guy.
Okay, well, I guess then uh, if no one has anything else, someone make a motion to adjourn.
I, I'll make that motion. I, I'll make that motion to adjourn, Fred Russo.
Motion to adjourn by Fred, is there a second?
Sharon Hutner will second.
But second by Sharon. Any further discussion? All in favor, Joe Chadwick?
Joe Chadwick is in favor.
Fred?
Fred Russo's in favor.
Marcy?
Marcy's in favor.
Sharon?
Sharon is in favor.
And Chair is also in favor, so we're adjourned. Thank you, everyone.
Night, everyone.
See you all next time.
This program was brought to you in part through the support of the town of Branford. Watch town meetings and other videos on demand at branfordtv.org.